Well done, sixteen. So, we're not going to start to count them, but we do have showcasing Brainerd at 7:15 with Brainerd Amateur Hockey Foundation. Mr. Rodney Ron, he wants to come up and you've got fourteen minutes.
Thank you. As you mentioned, my name is Rodney Ron. I'm a member of the board of the Brainerd Amateur Hockey Foundation. I was invited to come, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
To address you regarding the foundation, but I assume we want to talk mostly about the Essentia Health Sports Center and that most of you are familiar with that facility that we have made some substantial improvements to. First of all, as I stated, I'm with the Brainerd Amateur Hockey Foundation. That is not the hockey association. Hockey Association runs the hockey programs. They run our organized youth hockey. The foundation is, its mission is the development of youth athletes and that those athletes, in our case, require indoor ice. Those are figure skaters, those are hockey players primarily. The foundation board presently is comprised of seven individuals, all of whom are volunteers. So, all of the effort that you've seen, all the work that's been done, has been done by concerned citizens who volunteered their time and made their effort to make this happen. I want to draw a little parallel, if you will, and I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with SimCity. It's a game that kids play on the computer that they get to develop their own city and they get to develop their own communities. And I want to ask, you know, you to just imagine, if you had to develop the city today from scratch, what would you put in place? Well, I think the kids could probably figure this out quickly, so we'll have to try to figure it out ourselves as adults. Well, obviously, they would put the houses in first because people need a place to live and as more houses come in, they need services. So, we're going to need a fire department, we're going to need a police department, we'll need schools, we're going to need healthcare facilities, all those things that the citizens and the growing community requires. But you're also going to put in parks, you're going to put in programs of recreation because in a vital community, if you want to be a vital community, that's a key component. A key component of any significant city includes programs and facilities for the community and especially for the youth. And that's where the Brainerd Amateur Hockey Foundation comes in. Good programs and facilities are vital to youth development and they're also vital to community development. A little bit about the history, Brainerd Amateur Hockey Foundation really kind of came on the scene here in the last couple of years, but the facility itself and the dream of hockey programs within the community of Brainerd and then eventually the figure skating programs started in 1973. Couple of individuals, I'm not going to name them all because I won't give credit where credit is due. Bob Olson, Art Donlinger, Jack Ectrenot, Bob House, Don Monda. There were quite a number of concerned citizens who devoted their time and their energy just as we are doing now because they thought this was important to a vital community. In seventy-six, they opened the Brainerd Area Civic Center. Seventy-seven was when it first had indoor ice or what they called artificial ice. They continued to own and operate it and make improvements as they could up until the mid to late nineties, nineteen ninety-eight. The city of Brainerd took ownership of the facilities. At that time, it was two facilities because the Gold Medal Arena was built with private funds. I want to back up to say, all of that was built with private funds up to that point. Gold Medal Arena was built with private funds, the land was acquired with private funds, no taxpayer dollars were involved. In two thousand and nine, Baja, as I mentioned earlier, we had Baja and we had Baha assumed operational controls. I was involved in that as were the same guys that are currently on the foundation board that oversee the Essentia Health Sports Center. We made many improvements, mostly focusing on those things that we could do and that was primarily focusing on efficiency, making the utility bills come down or the efficient operation of the facility possible. Accessibility was key, it was important, but it wasn't something that we could afford to do. We sought to do it in many different ways, but it wasn't something that seemed feasible. In two thousand and thirteen, the foundation took ownership of the facilities and I kind of had to stop and say, well, ownership is more of stewardship and we feel that we are good stewards of that facility and will have to take on the responsibilities as steward for the facility that was started so many years ago and we're just the, now the responsible parties. We do want to give thanks to many, many volunteers, the many hours that were involved in that. Contractors were involved, but many of them gave their services at a discounted rate. There were many materials we were able to get inexpensive, less expensive than you could. So, there were a lot of parties involved in making that happen and if I were to try to start listing them off, I'm going to leave out some important names, so I'm not going to try to list them off. But just so you know that, you know, throughout this community, people came together, parties came together, business came together to make these improvements happen. Approximately $2.1 million worth of improvements happened at what was paid for them. The value was much higher because we were able to get a lot of things given. The primary focus on these improvements that we did this year was on accessibility. It was a key problem that goes back to whether or not we could give equal facility use, facility benefit, utility of the facilities to handicaps, to elderly, as we give to others. We added the extension onto the front of the building that provided for the elevators, accessible bathrooms that did provide for that. And then it also improved the aesthetics and the community feeling of it, the community center of it. And also, you can, as you can kind of tell, it brought the two arenas together as one. Whether you're upstairs or downstairs, you're now in one facility instead of two. We were able to also get some grant opportunities and we will continue to seek those grant opportunities, opportunities that when it was owned by the city, we failed at getting and some, one of the things we could not accomplish while it was owned by the city. Those things did come true and we will continue to pursue those in our ownership, our stewardship of the facility. We believe that the Essentia Health Sports Center is a vital part of this community. We hope that you agree. Participation in, by the youth, both in figure skating and hockey continues to grow. We have the, hopefully, the facilities to serve the programs as they are now and in the near future, but we have, are also addressing and will continue to address those needs beyond what, you know, what lies ahead. Accessibility to all, if you haven't visited, I encourage you to do so. You will find it is, is not just a place that is accessible to you, but it is also a nice place to gather and to take on, to enjoy some youth activities. We do, as you may notice, if you go by there on the weekends, the weekends are always busy. We have events going on every weekend throughout the winter, hockey tournaments, we'll have the figure skating show coming up here in March. We haven't been able to put our finger on it. We estimated, based on the analysis we were able to do, roughly 25,000 visitors this year, this winter time, that were drawn into this community, four events going on at that facility. Beyond that, the facility will continue to be used. When the ice comes out, we have dry floor events that happen, the chamber events, the builders and commerce show and several others that'll occur in those April, roughly the April timeframe that we believe, again, we're able to provide that facility for a very important part of this community. Questions?
Have you totally completed now with all the construction?
You're never done.
Okay.
We're done with what we can get done at this point. Quite frankly, we're out of money, but, no, and we struggle with that, you know, because there's always more to do than you have money to do. There are always more to do than you have resources to do. You deal with that as city council members, we deal with that as a foundation board. Why didn't we get this done? Why didn't we do this better? Well, you have to divide up your resources and say, what can we accomplish? And this is what we could.
Mr. Ron, the roof, you didn't mention that. And that's one that we were involved in with the insurance claim and the damage that was done from whatever it was. Is that buttoned up? I, you know, I mean, so often you do all the nice stuff inside in the roof leaks.
It is a concern.
Okay.
Yes.
Still in progress.
It's still in progress. We have gotten estimates, as you're aware, in that process of what to do and we're looking at it more holistically. Okay, well, if that's, you know, if we fix this, then do we fix this at the same time? It's an expensive undertaking and it's easy to get support for what we did this year. They can see it and so you can get involvement in that. It's very hard to get community involvement in a roof repair as they don't seem to, you know, you can't, you can't see it, you can't feel it. And it's almost like you need the rain to start coming in before you can get community involvement or a lot of support on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Ron, I think you mentioned about 25,000 visitors and, I mean, you're talking about skaters and families and the amount of people that arenas or those arenas bring into Brainerd and I don't know how you would figure a dollar impact amount that brings into our community. And when I say our community, between the hotels, the restaurants, but that's got to be in thousands and thousands of dollars because these people, when they come, they don't just spend a day and skate and then go home that night. A lot of them spend a couple of days or so and then they have their families and, you know, so that really is a huge economic impact into our city and I think a lot of people don't realize, and I don't know how you would figure out a dollar amount, but I know it is very, very tremendous amount of dollars that are brought into this community. So, for that, I thank you and the foundation and the hockey arena and all that stuff, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have two questions. First, are you able to keep up with demand now? The people who are, want more things there, more hours, more ice time, whatever. And the second question is, you look in your crystal ball, what will it look like in ten years? What are you going to add?
Are we keeping up with demand? In the winter, there's always more demand than there is time available and so we have to manage that. And it's going to be true in the summer, you know, because there's a lot of summer programs that go on. We're wrestling with that right now. Who do you give priority to? How do you push back? So, yes, there is demand for that facility and we believe that we have enough capacity for now. Before we started this improvement and about the time we were talking with the city on taking ownership of it, we're working with the city on taking ownership, we're trying to figure out whether or not we actually can and if that's such a good idea after all. But then we also started working on, and what you're seeing is the beginning of a master plan. I don't want to talk about that master plan, but we do, we have looked at it bigger and more than what you're seeing. Will that come? Time will tell. Certainly, as the programs grow, as the use of the facilities grow, as demand is there and resources available, you're going to continue to see, hopefully, in the near term, new and better things from that facility.
I want to thank you. Your fourteen minutes was well used.
Brilliant.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Well, good evening. We'll start the city council. It's Monday, February 2nd at 7:30 right on and we're in the Brainerd City Hall and we'll start out with roll call.
Mayor Wollin.
Here.
Pritchett.
Here.
Beavins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Orkinhagen.
Here.
Hilgar.
Here.
Coe.
Here.
Sheeler.
Here. I have the pledge allegiance. Everybody's prize.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the God, indivisible, with a fair review and justice for all.
I have number four on our agenda here is approval of the agenda. We have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposing, sign. Motion carries. Item number five, consent calendar. Notice to the public, all matters listed are considered routine by the council, will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. On as good causes shown prior to the time, the council votes on a motion. And this will be called, roll call. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. We'll ask for roll call.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Beavins.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Orkinhagen.
Yes.
Hilgar.
Yes.
Coe.
Yes.
Sheeler.
Yes. Move to item number six and that's 812 Juniper Street update. We've got some, you know, I'm going to probably let Kelly take over because it comes right from there, but Kelly, just want to, I promised Deb that she could have a few minutes and I see she's here from the.
Perfect. Before I call them up and I believe you're going to allow some time for.
Yep, yep.
So, Mr. Sheeler will cut us off when we've taken too much time, of everybody's time. But just so everybody up here, and if you just came into the council meeting, we're not safety and public works. All we've done so far is go through a little bit more about what was in our packet regarding documentation, letters going back and forth between the homeowners, between our police chief, between the building officials and we did have one citizen talk a little bit about the timeline. One of the concerning things that Commissioner Hilgar brought up and the citizen, Mr. Przynski brought up is there doesn't seem to be a lot of deadlines with some of these management plans. And I think that's a concern, but I don't know that anybody here has an answer as to what to do about it at this point. The ordinance is being followed, but it's probably a good point that maybe we need to readjust things going forward to have some sort of completion deadlines towards some of these, particularly the infractionary things that develop a letter being written. Therefore, most of the time on the building things, it's thirty days. So, that's kind of the way that goes. So, that being said, Deb, are you here? Do you want to start us off? Yeah, there you are. Okay, Father Tony, come on up. You do have to give your name and your address and we'll ask you to just, you know, kind of keep it short and tell us what you think.
Thank you, Father Tony and Deb. And I know you're not going to run out of words, Father.
Yeah. Mary knows that.
One thing, Father Tony, it's really hard. We're really interested in what you have to say.
Sure.
But if you've got a specific question about how the building official works, that would be best done, you know, at the countertop with the engineer and getting them together.
Absolutely.
Because some things came up that our administrator was able to answer, but a lot of things, if you're going to refer to a letter that was 2011.
No.
We may not have it in front of us.
No.
So, okay, just wanted to.
Mine will be more philosophical. How's that?
Perfect. Big picture.
Father Anthony Robleski, pastor at St. Francis, superintendent of the school. I also live at 416 North Ninth, so I live right in the neighborhood where the house is located. And I want to say also, St. Francis is a landlord of two rental houses right next to St. Francis, so we kind of cover the gamut. I'm sorry that I wasn't here the last time there was a council meeting because I was at a previously scheduled trip to the Holy Land and I wasn't going to not go there, but I was probably one of the only people in Israel who was reading the Brainerd Dispatch every single day. One of the things that I did want to say is that there's a big bright light that was shown on that area and especially on that property with that horrible incident that happened. And with that, we heard a lot of expressions of, "We dropped the ball." There were, Corky said, "We dropped the ball." The city council said, "We dropped the ball." And one thing that we don't want to happen is another ball being dropped. We just heard at the safety meeting that everything is being followed, all the ordinances are being followed and then the timeline is now going to be eighteen more months. I don't know what that means. I'm not a lawyer, sorry. I could tell you church law, but not civil law. What I'd like you to consider though is that we're not going to dim the light and we're not going to let this go away. We're looking for something that says this place is not going to continuously be a problem anymore. I think one of the things I heard that Ms. Hilgar said, which is right, is we have to provide affordable housing in this city. There's no doubt about it, but there's another part of that, which is human dignity and human dignity requires not just that it's cheap, but that it's safe, that it's well cared for, that it's a place you can be proud of. And the one thing that I would ask the councilors to think about is, would you choose to live there? Would you choose to live in that building as it is, since it still is fine to all the codes? I would venture a guess, no. If you were next door, you'd be calling like we're calling on a regular basis because it's our neighborhood. St. Francis has been there since 1871, the school's been there since 1909. We're not going anywhere and we're not going to let this light go dim, you know? I don't know the lakes. I've met Mr. Lake a few times. They seem like nice people. I'll bet their house, wherever they live, is in good repair. I'll bet it has a really nice roof and nice siding and it's safe. Why is it that we can do that for ourselves, but we don't have to do that for the people that rent from us? There's a lot of renters in the city now, more than there were fifteen years ago. It's not a problem that's going away. We're going to focus on this particular issue and any little thing that's going to come up, we are going to say something because we want it to be a safe neighborhood and we want housing that's safe and clean and in good repair. So, there it is. Any questions? My sermon for Sunday, Mary. There you go.
Very good. Shorter than usual.
Well, this isn't church, Mary. The separation of church and state.
Maybe I should pass the collection.
My other question is.
So, any questions, sure.
The light came on just recently, but you've been there for, since 1800s. What has it been like since the 1800s till now? I mean, until this light came on.
You know, it's.
Why is the light, besides what just happened, but why wasn't this addressed? Like, why is there, I mean, the shingles are just as bad or whatever?
They have been and if you talk to parishioners, you talk to some of our school families, they will say it has been, there have been issues that have come up over and over again. I think the big issue that came up is there was a life that was lost. We can't forget that. I mean, we as a parish community, as a school community, have been praying for these victims. That can't be lost in this, but there were other victims there. This isn't the first thing. This is the biggest, most recent thing. We just don't want to have another one and another one and another one. And quite honestly, if we don't pay attention to these things together, and it was funny, Chip had said, well, we were gathering down there, he said, you know, "Are you plotting against us?" It was a joke, but as a school community, as a parish community, we want to work together. But we also don't want it to just go away. We don't want to say, "Well, all the ordinances are being followed, so there's nothing we can do." That to us is unacceptable and we are going to call on every little thing that's legally possible.
Do you have anything to add?
I don't. Father Tony was the speaker.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Father.
Does anybody else that would like to add to Father Ramona? Put your name and address and, and thank you.
Hello. My name is Krista Bernander and I live at 6141 Fairmont Court in Baxter. My husband and I have four children. Two of them are at St. Francis. We have a third grader and we have a kindergartner and then we have two others that will be attending in the future. We want our school to be a safe place. We want to feel comfortable when we drop them off every morning. We want to feel that everything is being done to ensure that this is a safe place for our family, for our children, for our teachers and for the staff at school. We want our school to be an inviting place for new families to come into the community and want to attend St. Francis. As parents, we are extremely concerned with the safety of our children and all of the children and staff at St. Francis. We are concerned for the residents of the neighborhood as well as the members of the senior center next to the home in Juniper. There's criminal activity occurring under this roof of this house on Juniper. We can talk about the looks, we can talk about the front door. There's criminal activity occurring. We all know it. It is just footsteps across the front door of our school. It cannot go on. We want our children to be in a safe environment. We want our community to be safe and please, it starts with action now. Please don't wait. Please do not wait for the next incident occurring that might involve a child or an elderly person or a resident in the community. We offer our support as parents of the school. We offer our help, we offer our prayers. We need your help. Please take action.
Thank you. If anybody's going to come up, we would like new information. So, you know, as you come up, you've heard what you heard and if you can add new information is what we're looking for, so. Anybody want to come up? I didn't mean to scare anybody off. The mayor wants to add. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, come on up. No, come on up.
I'll wait, I'll wait.
Yeah, come on up. We got it rolling yet. Come on up.
I'll try not to forget what I was going to say.
John Przynski, 13792 Hollywood Drive, Baxter, Minnesota, but here as a parent of the school. So, earlier I was at the safety meeting and asked for clarifications or just things that we've seen in the paper. I guess the point of that was, is that there's been some discussion that somehow no one knew that this was going on. Maybe the council wasn't informed, I believe that, but seven letters were sent out before the incident. The landowner knew that there was a problem. Maybe they say, "No, we didn't," but seven letters were generated. Now, I know the intent and it's very specific in the ordinance. Father Tony told you that we're landowners too. Landowners get the ordinance. There's some accountability for the landowner that says, "I read it," correct? You would assume that after the third, maybe the fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, that there would have been somebody who would have said, "Sometime the city's going to call me for a plan of action." Or if I'm proactive and some of the things that were in the Brainerd Dispatch were severe, beatings, domestic violence, I mean, these weren't small offenses out of the fifty-seven other calls that were given. So, this has a pattern. This property has a pattern. This landowner has a pattern at this house. We've been very specific, right? There was some discussion, you know, we haven't called, you were right, we haven't called for new laws or new ordinances. We agree. We believe that there are ordinance right now, we just need to follow them. And I thought one of the things that Dave, you know, Councilman Pritchett, you made a comment I don't think anybody heard. I think the most benevolent thing, I agree with you, is, wouldn't it be nice if this was donated? If we could, you know, we had somebody else stand here and say, "Let's shine the light out of darkness," Martin Luther King. That would be the most benevolent act that I think that I could find as if the landowners donated it. Not necessarily St. Francis, somebody else, you know, let's make something good out of it. But right now, it's a challenge. Here's what I don't want to see and I understand, I would ask a couple of things. I agree, we need to start putting timelines because quite honestly, I don't believe anything is going to get done. That's my opinion based on what I've watched in the past. I don't think that the property's going to get improved. My opinion, unless there's timelines. I think that, I wonder why a letter wasn't sent out on the January 5th incident, if that was really the case. And in terms, when you look at the ordinance, it doesn't really talk about things happening in sequence. It talks about an event occurred, which was now the second, actually the eighth, but the second, and another event occurred. It doesn't say that all the things have to happen in sequence before you're in violation of the ordinance. In my opinion, it's very literal. You have certain requirements that you have to. You have certain requirements that you have to follow after the second, which you have. But a third has occurred, and a fourth, and now possibly with the car parking on the sidewalk, I understand now, possibly a fifth. So, here's what I don't wanna have happen. I'll admit my age at this point in time. I was around when the movie Jaws was there, and a good friend reminded me of this. Do we wanna sit there sometime in the future, like the sheriff on the beach saying, "I knew it was gonna happen"? We have a repeated offense at this house. We know that there's a problem. Do we wanna wait until something heinous happens again before we act? I appreciate your consideration.
Thanks, Steve. At this point, I think we, let's leave it up to the council here real quick, if anybody's got any questions, or the mayor wants to jump in now.
I'd just like to make a comment, and I guess it doesn't pertain specifically to this particular property, but a comment was made about drug traffic, or possibly having, and I know from experience, I had a gentleman get ahold of me, and he said that the house next door to him had a lot of cars coming and going, and they were there just a short period of time, and it was a lot of times in the evening, but it might be early morning. And if you, as an audience, listening as well as out here, are aware of any particular house next to you, or any place, and I talked to the police chief, and he says, "The best thing you can do is get license numbers." And the more license numbers you can give to them, they can follow up on it. It took about a year and a half of getting the license numbers from this gentleman, because he lived right next door, so he could have access to writing down these numbers as the people would drive up. They would be there maybe five minutes and gone. And anyway, by having a compilation of numbers, license numbers, turn it over to the police department, they were able to take care of the drug problem that was in that particular house, and that was not in North Brainerd, it was actually in South Brainerd. But I think that one of the things that, as citizens, and I don't care where you live or what you, if you see something that isn't right, call. We have a police department that is here to protect and to serve. And our main concern is that we want a safe, desirable neighborhood in all parts of our city. And you people are the people that have the eyes and ears that can relate problems. We don't have enough police officers to go around, or don't have the time to sit next to a house, but you people, if you live next to a house, or see a, talk to somebody else that is having a problem, don't sit back and relax and say, "Well, somebody will take care of it." Become involved. You don't have to be a snitch. You just be a caring, private citizen, and make note of the problems that you see and report them. If they turn out to be nothing, this is wonderful. But by and large, there is enough problems going on in this city, in enough places, and I'm not saying they're all rentals, but most of, a lot of them can be or are. Make certain that you take note of it. Call the police department. That's what we hire these people to do, isn't it? And that's to protect and serve. So, I'm asking you, as private citizens, neighbors, to look out for your neighbors and everybody else that you can think of, pass the word on. But we rely on you people to help make this city a much more enjoyable, safe place to live. So, with that, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else wanna add anything here this evening?
Could I just particularly reemphasize your point that it isn't just this property, but properties all over the city that we all need to be aware of? And then also, it's my understanding that part of the ball being dropped by the city, and I just toss this out as an example of budgetary issues, as we try hard to rein in and hold down the taxes that we pay. In the process, something's gotta give. And in this particular case, I think the ball was dropped by the, in the arena of the person who we had hired as a crime prevention specialist. Their position had to be terminated because of lowering taxes. And so, that's my understanding of where that happened.
Steve, wanna add anything? Anybody else?
Well, Councilman Evans and I were having a sidebar about a motion.
Well, I just, before the motion, I just was gonna add real quick, and I know the mayor just put your guys' feet to the fire as far as reporting stuff, but then that puts a lot of responsibility back on us to react to that, and that's what I want you guys to know, you know? Not only that we're looking for those phone calls in, but then we, as a body, gotta take those phone calls seriously and then follow up on them. So, that's gonna be our responsibility as you see things out there. So, I appreciate the mayor's report.
Can I add one thing?
Yep.
Coming out of the Personnel Finance Committee tonight will be a recommendation that when the landlords apply for their rental license, which they must do annually, and they pay a fee for that, and that fee generated over $90,000 last year, which I believe was adequate to take care of the work that the rental inspector really was hired to do. But coming from the committee will be the request to include, with the letter to the landlord identifying that the license is due, that the letter will offer some help from the city. If you have questions, here are some ordinances, we'll give numbers that may help you. Here are some phone numbers, police, fire, council people, mayor, and so on. Talking with landlords, some of them have felt that they were, there was a real disconnect between the city and the landlords, and I think to a great extent, that was true. If a landlord wanted help, they were pretty much told, you know, "Bug off, go find it somewhere else." I don't think the city has been really much of a help to landlords. That needs to change, too. The ordinances are there, the staff are there, but, and we're also going to let the landlords know that there is a tenant landlord handbook, comes from the Department of Commerce, I believe from the state. It's free. So, we're going to make certain they're aware of those, and also include ideas for leases that will say to the tenant in the lease, once it's signed, that any illegal activity will result in an immediate eviction. That should also help the landlords. So, I think this is going to be a process that will move, and I think the council is, I think we're gonna see that it moves, so. All I have.
Thanks, Mary. So, with that, I wanna thank everybody that was here, you know, it's been great. Is it, oh, you got, okay, you got a motion.
We have a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
We'd like to get, and it's really, it's really more towards the, towards the long term of things, but it does seem to be something that's lacking in our ordinance. And it was brought up by a couple of citizens, as well as a couple of councilmembers. And the motion would be simply to direct staff to revisit, not so much the building side of things, 'cause that's pretty much 30 days, our engineer has said 30 days, but more with the, working with the attorney and the police department regarding the disorderly use of a rental property and the timing for remedying these things, as well as in the management plan. It's very, it's very vaguer, nonexistent, as to, as to specifically what will be done and what measurement stick will be used as to whether it's done. Now, we have a management plan on this particular property, and I think, I think part of, part of what may have happened, and I'm hoping our attorney will, will look at me and give me a nod, is I think what's happened is, is we started writing these letters, and the instances were piling up so quickly that the property owners and the police couldn't respond back and forth fast enough. You have to...
Mr. Evans? Yeah. That's a Mary Coop motion. Can you shorten it?
My motion, my motion, thank you. Yeah, that was, that was the meanest thing anybody's ever said. I'm gonna go home. My motion is to direct staff to review the conduct on a rental property, particularly with respect to the timelines on the management plan and the letters that we send out. And I so move.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second, and we will have discussion on that motion. Go ahead, Dave.
I have a question, and I know one of my early questions to Corky with the management plan was, is there some sort of a, a time period, okay, they write the plan, what if the next day they, you know, do they have a time to implement the plan? Is that kinda what we're looking at also?
Some timelines and progressive, some progressive steps within it that might be penalties, or it might be consequences.
Right.
But there's nothing specific within that, within the ordinance that addresses...
Right, 'cause I asked Corky, I said, "Well, what happens if X happens?" You know, okay, good.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Now, thank you for everything. You heard the motion, you seen the direction of the city. Keep the pressure on us, and we'll deliver, hopefully. Thank you, everybody. I know there's some students here that have some stuff signed, and we do have a curfew in Brainerd, so whenever you need to get those signed, we'll take care of them.
You wanna come up and have them sign?
Yeah, if you wanna do that now.
I helped those two young ladies earlier, so there might be...
And somebody else.
Is there anybody else that needs her sign?
Mr. Franco's got a yellow sheet of paper, maybe he needs that signed.
Yeah, come on up, we'll sign it.
Yeah, we'll sign them now, so that, then we'll get rolling with the council meeting.
We'll tell Ms. Hexton if you left right now.
But you can stay.
You can stay.
I'm just...
Yeah, you're welcome to sign.
Yeah, anyone on the council ever can sign.
I got her email, right?
It's worth extra points.
Thank you for coming.
I'm pleased, though. Me and Gary would love to sign something for him.
Melissa?
Ah, there's an official...
Melissa.
Just gonna ignore you altogether.
Oh, it's you.
I like to get together and talk to you about some of the, some of the habitat. Talked a little bit about habitat. I know he'd mentioned a couple of programs that could be...
And just please stay, I just, whenever you guys decide you wanna...
Thank you.
Yeah, I was like, that'd be awesome. High school student, you know, oddity.
Oh, a lot, a couple hours. Couple of freshman.
You're picking on me for that?
Freshmen. You can say as long as you want. That works.
What?
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Father. Thank you.
Probably keep the light on.
Oh, bright.
We'll start out with the next item, which is number seven, hydro dam update by BPU Council liaison Sheila. And you guys been reading in the paper, I'm not gonna say much, I can't say much. One of the things I do want everybody to understand, and I'm, I'm gonna call it the Knows Ark now, because we've got two of everything. We have two different city bodies, BPU and us. We have two different lawyers, Eric and James. We have two different engineers, Mead and Hunt, and we've got one contractor, and there was talk about possibly adding another one. So, it's been the twos of everything there, and that's probably some of the confusion to me that's going on over there, you know, to try to funnel this all down and get it into one body. So, with that, I had asked, we had a meeting this afternoon, or this morning at 11 o'clock, and it was a closed door, and it was consideration of the payment dispute issues related to the hydroelectric dam repair project and possible action by Park Construction Company payment requests. All our portions of the meeting will be closed in a public pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D05 subdivision three for attorney-client privilege. That was continued until this Friday, and it will be at 2:30. So, with that, there's, you know, somewhat of a gag order on most of us. But I had asked James to give me an update tonight, and at 7:30 here, and I, the power of social media, he just said, "Dam update. Sorry, I gave the short update to Eric, who said he would talk to you. The commission met in closed session and gave confidential direction to legal counsel and staff to discuss with Park and attempt to resolve disputes and to move forward with the project. They will report back to the board on Friday." And then he sent it from his phone. So, I'm gonna let Eric jump in real quick here, 'cause I know that you had a discussion for, straight up, shed some light to the council, what's going on.
Well, I think that's essentially the update.
Okay.
Jim has stolen my thunder a little there, but yeah, that's unfortunately about all that we can disclose at this point, other than we're continuing to work with Park Construction to resolve those payment disputes, and the meeting has been continued until Friday afternoon, I believe with hopes that, you know, there'll be some progress.
Thank you. So, with that, I really can't add much more onto it, in a, you know, like everybody would like to, but we'll have more at the next council meeting. I will continue putting this on the council meeting, just to keep you updated, so every council meeting, we'll have a dam...
We'll have a dam update.
A dam update.
And that way, you know, Eric will stay in touch, and at least, whatever on the legal side of things, you know, keep us in the loop. So, then we'll move on to item...
Let me ask a question, please.
Yes.
Did they tape the closed meeting?
No.
I was not there today, but I would, yeah, I would venture to guess, no, you're not required to record in closed sessions for attorney-client privilege.
Any more legal questions? We'll move on to item number eight, and I'm sorry about the, it's all illegal. Council committee reports. We'll start out with Post-it on Finance Committee. Mary Coop.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll start with number one, the approval of bills and payments to contractors, and there were no contractor payments. So, I will move approval of the bills.
Second.
Ready, sir?
Oh, okay.
I moved, he seconded.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
I asked for a question.
Okay, no, I'm sorry, I was just putting them...
We were cruising there for a second, weren't we?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, Pritchett.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Forkenhagen.
Yep.
Hillergerd.
Yes.
Co.
Yes.
Sheila.
Yes. Item number two.
Okay, item number two is the annual review and approval of the investment policy. And I'm sure everyone read that, including all the fine print and everything that was Xed out or added in, so we won't need to go to any, any significant discussion, but there were some changes, primarily those dealing with state statute. And so, with those changes, I would move that we approve the investment policy of the city.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Item number three.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Street department lighting upgrade, and that was in the packet. I know everyone read it very carefully, and the bottom line of that is that we are recommending, and I move that we accept the upgrade to T fluorescent lighting for the street department garage. The final cost on that is $3,070. If you read it, you'll see that there is a estimated nearly cost saving of $2,355.
Did you get a second on that motion, Mary?
Second.
Yes, I did, didn't I?
No.
I was sorry.
You went right into the explanation.
I'm so sorry.
I'm not gonna...
It happens, Mary.
And the payback is estimated to be 15 months. And so, as you compared that with the potential of LED lighting, you see that it's much more cost efficient, and the payback is much better, and the street sewer department are recommending this. And so, I move that we proceed with the purchase of the T fluorescent lights at a total cost $3,070. The money will come from the street sewer department, the payback will be to the street sewer department.
Thank you, Mary. We have a motion, we have a second, and we'll have discussion.
And I just wanted to say, you know, I lean towards the LED lights, but when you look at the savings and the time back on the savings and the possibility of there being some advancements in lowering the cost, the LEDs coming down the pike, this puts us in a good position to save money for the city and make a decision whether we wanna save more money and go to LEDs in the future. Also, with the replacement costs and the lifetime of the bulbs, it makes a lot of sense.
Thanks, Steve. Any more discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion carries. Item number four.
That is item number four, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And the fire department will be conducting fire extinguisher training to employees at That will be money they will pay us, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries, item number five.
Item number five is, uh, city administrator advance to step D of the salary administration plan. Uh, we had a lots and lots of discussion about that, uh, calls back and forth among us and to the attorney as a matter of fact, um, concern, and I think I will bring this out because, for the public as well.
Do you have a motion?
No, I don't. May I bring some of the information out first? If you prefer me to make the motion, I will. I will, I will move then that we approve the recommendation, uh, for the city administrator to proceed to step D or one hundred percent of the pay scale, uh, after one year of employment, which is February tenth. The, I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion, Mary, go ahead.
Yes, there was, uh, concerns that were raised, and we tried to reconcile them, that had to do with, in the work agreement terms of employment, the word annual, the annual salary of a hundred and five thousand dollars, which has now gone with this motion, goes from a hundred and five thousand to a hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars, or an increase of seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That's significant, and, um, I think was the reason for the parsing, I guess, of every phrase that was in there. The bottom line, without going into a lengthy explanation, is the in, the significant increase was based on the two percent increase that the city granted all city employees sometime in the middle of December, which took place January first, and that impacted the base from which we go forward. In a nutshell, that's what it amounted. And so because the base changed, the step D changed because of it, and so that's what it was, and, uh, our committee is having on our March fourth workshop, that is our major agenda item, to discuss all the steps that are in our city manuals and determine how we should go forward in the future. That's the explanation.
Thank you. Um, I talked to Patrick this afternoon, I had a tremendous big misunderstanding. Patrick cleared it up, uh, and I appreciate his time that he, he spent on it. I have no issues now with any of it because Patrick cleared it up very well for me, and it's my fault for not understanding it, it's not anybody else's, so I appreciate that. And I'm gonna say right out that, you know, he's worth every penny, 'cause of the pressure that we're putting on him, so I'm very happy that you're getting your raise, and with that, we got a motion, and we got a second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same size opposed. Motion carries, we go to item number six.
That was the CIP bond projects, and we reviewed them. Once again, we have a hundred thousand dollars in our capital improvement budget, obviously we're not gonna do all of these, so of course we are talking priority, priority, priority. Uh, sometime last fall, I think staff identified the need for a new phone system as a priority, and so they are already looking at options for that, and, um, hopefully they will have information, and, uh, we will, uh, be able to move forward in the not-too-distant, uh, future as, as we proceed. The projected cost of a new telephone system is about thirty-six thousand dollars.
You have a motion on the floor?
No, I just, this is informational.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'm just checking.
That's good. Item seven, the LMC Joint Legislative Conference, uh, that is March fourth and fifth. The major day is March fifth, the evening before is primarily a lot of hoopla. Uh, but if you're there the fifth, it'll probably be a day filled with a lot of information, uh, the ability to visit with your, uh, area legislators, visit with, uh, League of Cities staff, and visit with your peers among the other cities. So if you can go, be sure to let staff know so they can register you, and, um, I think you'll find it very worthwhile, that's also informational.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, do you want us to move on to number eight?
Yes.
That was discussion of accepting credit, uh, cards and website design, uh, something we've talked about in the past, once again, uh, because our budget has about twenty thousand dollars in it for all of the other little projects we're talking about. Uh, clearly, the need for judicious consideration, I guess, is, is an understatement. However, uh, staff has been reviewing the credit card situation and continue to look at options. I think we have to move into that, but there are a number of things that have to be reviewed first, so they come back with an option that's not only workable for the public but also cost-effective. There is a cost involved, there is also a cost to the user of a credit card involved, over and above what they would use the card for. So there are many things to discuss, but it's in progress. The other thing was the need for the update of the website, and, uh, those who use the website seem to agree that it definitely needs to be updated. That's another thing that's been talked about, but the first issue is what do we want on it? What do we want on the website? You can't design it to, you know, we want on it. One of our council members, Chip of Borkenhagen, is very willing to put some thoughts forward on the design of the website. I think we want all of the council to be involved in what should be on that website. So it has to be something we're all in agreement and comfortable with when it's designed. So, um, we will accept, uh, maybe I need to make a motion, uh, that I would move that we, uh, accept Mr. Borkenhagen's offer to help us identify the things we want on the website, and in that motion include that all council members should come forth with their ideas.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second discussion, Mr. Borkenhagen? You did well downstairs.
No, I, no, other than, you know, timing for me personally right now is not real hot.
Okay.
But what I would very much welcome is anyone who has any ideas or thoughts, whether it be from here or the community in general, as to what should be on that website, just email them to me, and I collect all of those, and...
Okay.
That'd be good.
It's absolutely crucial that it be our website, and that's community, our website, so I think that's a good thing.
Anybody else in discussion? We have a motion, we have a sec, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries, we'll move on to item number nine.
Number nine, uh, put together a tentative letter that I believe should be included when the notice that your rental license is due, uh, should be included to that, uh, property owner. Uh, it puts the city in a little more involvement, I think that's been missing. Uh, I think it would, would be a sign to the landlord that we're here to help, not just to sanction, but also to help. Included in that letter should be a copy of, yeah, the crime-free lease addendum that Rick Fargo brought forward to us, and is excellent, we also wanna suggest that, as well as add to the letter, uh, number of telephone numbers from city, uh, fire, police, council members, mayor, that they could contact, as well as numbers of ordinances that may be of help to them, that they could request, as well as the tenant landlord books that are available without cost. So I think if we do this, if we can include this, we're doing our part to also help this entire situation. So the motion would be that approval of the letter after it's edited and completed.
Aye.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries.
Item ten, Mr. Chairman, I put on the agenda and my two council members...
Is there a motion on item ten?
Uh, no.
Okay.
But there is discussion, requests that we have some.
Yep.
Um, there is really no motion. As you know, the city council does not accept per diems. As you may not know, the, uh, our policy manual allows per diems for the council to the tune of fifteen dollars for specific meetings. So far as I know, no one has ever taken it, and hopefully no one ever will. However, there are some, two committees that the council makes appointments to. Those two are the HRA and Region Five. Each of those pays a per diem. HRA pays seven, seventy-five dollars, I guess, so I thought it was fifteen, but Gabe informed me it was seventy-five. Region Five pays fifty. Though, they are the only two committees that the council appoints to that have a per diem. It's my belief that, uh, if the council appoints to a committee, there should be no per diem. I made the counter-suggestion that if there is, then they, those committees should be rotated. Council members, uh, Johnson and Richard made the counter-argument that to rotate those committees might not be a good idea because it takes a while to learn them, to get on to the specifics, and I can't disagree with that. So it seems to me the best thing would be to have no per diems. Now, you may think that's small and nitpicky, but I don't. We all receive a salary, our salaries are equal. I believe the mayor gets a little more, and I believe the council committee chairs get a little more, but I'm not even sure.
Yes, they do.
We do.
President, the council committee chairs, and the mayor.
Okay, but other than that, the salary is exactly the same, and the chairman rotates, and committee chairs change. So there's some fairness there. So whether or not you probably don't wanna have a discussion tonight, so I lay this out for your thinking, uh, no one ever likes to have a discussion like this, I think it's only fair. I don't think any two members of the council, whether it's Gary and me, or, uh, Sue and Chip, or anyone else, should be, uh, in effect, add up financially advantageous, which, this is exactly what it is. So I laid it out, that's all I have to say. Anyone wants to add to it, that's fine.
You know...
Go ahead, Dave.
When I look at this, neither Gabe nor I actually knew either of these committees had any kind of stipend when we started. Uh, another argument that you can make when you look at a lot of the surrounding, surrounding areas, oof, all their committees get stipends, you know, um, that's kinda how I look at it, you know, fifty dollars, jeez, you know, that's not gonna break the bank one way or the other, if you're get, trying to get on Region Five for the fifty dollars, I don't think, uh, you know. My issue is way more with the rotation, um, the per diems we can discuss, I have no problem discussing that. I mean, you can also make the argument that some of, some committees meet longer and take longer than other committees do, and so if we start parsing that out, that's a, that's a pretty big can of worms to also, so...
Go ahead, Dean.
And I, I agree with everything he just said, and if the council decides that we should never take any money from any committees for anything, I, I would be perfectly fine with that, it wouldn't bother me at all. The only point I made during discussion was rotating committees would just be a disservice to the entire community.
Okay. Anybody on our left?
This has nothing to do with mileage, right?
No, no. Mileage, I think, is appropriate, if you have a distance, I can't argue with that.
Yep.
Just case in point, the, uh, people on the, uh, I was on the airport commission for twenty years, and the county gets like fifty dollars per diem, and we had tons of meetings. I mean, you would not believe the meetings that we had, and for everyone in the meeting, they got fifty bucks, and I got to sit there and have my coffee if I wanted a cup of coffee, and I had to pay for the coffee myself, so... But I mean, you serve, a lot of times, to me, you serve because you want it served.
That's right.
And, uh, and if you don't, then you, it has to be taken off.
Awesome.
Anyway, I had to bring that out, but, but it's interesting that the county does, you know, for all of their, their, their elected people, as well as their appointed people, uh, got a per diem.
You know, and if we're looking at that, then you would look at committee chairs and council president, because you're not forced to be those.
But they rotate.
Only if they're appointed, you know, there's not like a have to rotate, everything else rotates, when, when the person that does the appointment changes the person.
And we've been very blessed to have most of the committees filled without even asking if they're getting per diem or not, and if it ever gets to the point where you can't find committee members, that would be an issue then, but up till now, it looks like everybody's volunteering and doing a wonderful job, not worrying about the money, so...
Item eleven is just, uh, again, uh, airport security update, and as you recall, we asked that letters be sent to the county to have some kind of a meeting with the appropriate people there about sharing the cost of airport security, and, uh, and that, when we hear back from them, we'll be setting up the appropriate meeting, so, uh, it is not dead, and we're just waiting for more information and then come back, and, uh, it'll be ongoing. That completes our report, Mr. Chair.
You have to applaud Mary for handling twelve items in that short a time.
Self-inflicted, she asked for most of those items. What are you, running danger field now?
We're going to be Safety and Public Works Committee, Mr. Beavons.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number one, uh, the move is to approve the event application for the Tur of Lakes, uh, pending the approval of traffic control with the Brainerd Police Department, and obtaining the necessary MINDOC permits, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion carries, item number two.
Item number two, the move by Mr. Alderman Borkenhagen is to reduce the fine from four hundred and fifty dollars to three hundred dollars, thereby making the total amount due three hundred and...
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two dollars, and Chip so moves.
Aye, second. I can throw it at us.
We have a motion, we have a second, and we'll have discussion.
Mr. Chair, can I ask why? That's the reasoning behind the reduction?
Tell them, Kelly.
Be nice. Can you believe that?
No.
Be nice.
Be nice.
There was a, the, the applicant was, was here.
Okay.
And they, they gave a, um, you sort of put me on the spot, 'cause I am in a speaking against this motion, but I'll try and keep it to the facts. Then the applicant had the story, which you have in your packet, basically, where they continually misplaced, and I don't, I don't mean to sound glum, they, they misplaced the application, they moved...
They weren't residing at the address.
They weren't residing at the address, but they did receive the application before they moved. There was a sale of the property, but it was to another family member. So, it, somehow the letter got put into the, into the storage facility for some length of time, and lo and behold, our fines do go up, uh, at an exponential rate after enough time, and they do get rather steep, so I'll save the rest of my argument for my, uh, for my voting against argument. I'm gonna vote against the motion also because I think Mr. Beavons gave up very, very good reasons why it should be voted against, so, um, with that, any more discussion?
Without hearing Mr. Beavons' reasons, I'm also looking at voting against, when you look at the timeline, it was bought in July, you know, the, the reg, it was, they were informed then, the temporary housing was in August, the letters were sent in August and September, the fee is paid, you know, plus the thirty day in December, it just didn't make any sense to me, so...
Yeah, I, I plan on voting against the motion, and I think if our fees are punitive, maybe we should look at adjusting them in, in the ordinances, as opposed to just reducing people who ask for the reduction.
So basically, we only have one nice guy in the council.
I don't think I could argue it, argue this any better than the people who weren't even there. You know, I, I'd, I'd just like to speak to the, to the ordinance, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
And the, it does, it is excessive, but it's acceptable after, after a lengthy period of time. And we've had people who, who have stood here and claimed they never even received any letters, and we've held them to the letter of the ordinance. And the reason is, is because without that, I mean, then we might as well change the ordinance, if we're not going to do it, and we're coming up to the encouragement ordinance, and our planners asked for our support in clarifying that for all the same reasons. If you don't like the fines, then, then, then you, you really need to change the fines. And in this case, outside of, outside of the fact that the, the, uh, the applicant came up with all the reasons why they didn't... came up with all the reasons why they didn't pay it, the truth be told is, the reason they didn't pay it is because they didn't pay it. So they had it in their hand and set it over here, and then moved it over there, and then stored it. And, you know, I'm sorry, I, I deal with those type of, of things all the time, and, and I've been late a few times, and you have to pay. And that makes you not do it the next time. And the rental housing business is a business, and there are obligations, responsibilities. You can hear about that a lot, I think, this year, so.
And one of the things that you had mentioned earlier is that the counter, when you come up here, the great staff that we have need a direction of how to handle these, and, you know, they can't sit there and every single one's wondering is, they're going to be overturned by the council, and they're going through these motions. So I appreciate. So we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second, any more discussion? If anybody's all in favor, say aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I miss, I move to uphold, to uphold the four hundred and fifty dollar late registration fee in addition to the thirty-two dollars rental license application fee.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number four, or three, I'm sorry, is improvement, one-four, one-five, airport utility extension. We've got an excellent, uh, letter in our packet from Engineer Halsetter regarding the process, and the move is to approve the recommendation of the committee and, uh, um, hire the combined firm of SEH and WSN, an isim move.
We have a motion, we have a second. The only discussion I'm going to have, and, you know, I just came from a meeting today where you got two engineers, and I just don't want that headache. So I am looking over at Jeff, and I know that I lost in, you know, in the committee on that, on this, and I just want assurance that I don't come out of it where you got the ball bouncing between two engineers. And if you can help me out on that, I'm going to vote for this.
If I can, I, I don't see that being an issue. Uh, we've dealt with, um, engineering firms, partnering with local firms, uh, to do projects on many occasions. Uh, it's not unusual. Um, we've got, in this case, we're not contracting with two firms separately, we're contracting with one firm. We would have a contract with SEH, they would subcontract portions of that work to WSN. So SEH is ultimately the one and only firm that's on the spot to do things correctly.
So there won't be one of rec, uh, engineer of record and one engineer of reviewing?
Nope.
Like we're dealing, okay.
Nope.
Thank you so much for that.
SEH is our engineer of record.
Okay.
I have a question, please, Mr. Chair. Is there no, has there been no fee identified at this point?
Like, Ken, at, at this point, we're, uh, our first step is going to be to sit down and discuss the scope. Uh, as we went through the process, we're still not sure exactly what's being designed and where the utility alignments are going to be located. So we're not sure, um, you know, there's a certain amount of preliminary work that's going to have to occur before we understand exactly where everything's going to go. Once we know where things will go and what's being designed, then we would move into a second phase and discuss a fee for actually doing that design work. So, uh, our initial phase is going to be primarily scoping, uh, to do a sufficient number or amount of preliminary work so that we understand exactly what, and what's being designed and where it's being located.
So we don't know what the scoping is going to cost either?
At, at this, no, that's what we're going to sit down and go through as our first phase.
That was discussed in the committee, and generally Jeff brought up that, you know, you're looking at that fifteen percent for engineering fees, that's kind of the, you know, you were saying, you know, and that's something you have to work off of, up or down, you know, from that fifteen percent of a project.
Is that, and then would be to their benefit then to make the project pretty costly?
No.
And get fifteen percent of it?
That's a general rule of thumb, but, uh, going through our scoping process, we're going to have to evaluate a, a number of different construction alternatives such as, um, open cutting our utility trenches versus directional boring. Um, there's going to be a variety of options, there, there could be some cost offsets in some of these, uh, use of materials and or construction methods. Uh, so as we're scoping that, that's going to be part of our evaluation processes, which are the most cost-effective ways of doing this project.
Okay, and then a final question. This, when will we have money for this? I know it's, I understand the convolution with Baxter. But at some point, if we hire this done, there'll be money coming due. And I don't like to see the city get into these positions, which we occasionally do. We kind of move ahead of ourselves, we don't go hard and pay for things and end up with problems we didn't anticipate. I'd like to know, oh, we're going to pay for this, because I don't think there's any money coming from Baxter for a while.
That would have to be a separate.
Okay.
And then only reason.
But it better be pretty quick.
Yes.
Because I cannot, if somebody is going to come up here and say, another huge bond, many millions, dollar, more bond, more debt, I mean, you ain't seen nothing yet until I get up on that one. So I want the money discussed and soon.
Yeah, Mary and I will say that that is exactly the direction we're going. But we have the mayor of Baxter that had to resign for thirty days. We have the city administrator of Baxter that's in surgery, and both of them are out, otherwise we would have addressed it right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So we're looking at possibly the first meeting or the second meeting of March that we can get this going, and Patrick has been part of it. So I appreciate your question, I really do, and that, I have the same concern. So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All same sign, motion carries. Item number four has been covered.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number five, the right-of-way encroachment policy. A motion is to, um, accept the, um, encroachment policy language as presented in your packet, an isim move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, oh, go ahead.
Mary, you want to go first?
No, I only want to clarify one thing, in case anybody has any questions about it. Anything fence that was erected prior to the city putting into effect its fence ordinance cannot be enforced by this. And if you disagree, you have a little chat with the county attorney. Uh, you can't enact an ordinance and then say, by the way, this covers everything took place fifty years ago, it doesn't. An ordinance has control after it is adopted. And so I, I like the way that, I think this is workable, and I appreciate the work that went into it. But let's not suggest that somebody who had a fence there in two thousand, for example, we didn't even have a fence ordinance, or what, two thousand nine or something? That's not, that ordinance is not enforceable backwards.
Go ahead, Sue.
Well, I would agree, except that, um, item number four, that speaks to, um, the encroachment falling into disrepair. It would be to the best interests of that property ordinance to not allow it to become to the point where it's falling down, because then it would be covered by this.
No disagreement.
Okay.
Little clarity on what you're saying, but even if we didn't have a fence ordinance, the law says nothing in the right-of-way all the way back since the city has been in existence. So really, that includes a fence, you don't have to specifically say a fence, but that, you know, nothing can be put in the right-of-way. As long as, I mean, and that's, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, to refer to, um, what we're talking about here as a fence ordinance is not really the issue. Um, if we have a fence ordinance, that's a zoning issue. We're dealing with the right-of-way, and we have a right-of-way ordinance, we have right-of-way language that's been in our city code for decades, that has specified for decades that nothing can go in the right-of-way. So there has been this ordinance on our books for decades.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I have a question then. So we have this policy, is this just a policy for staff?
Yes.
Then, so the ordinance is still the ordinance, nothing ever allowed in the right-of-way, ever. But staff's not going to waste time on it if it's a fifteen-year-old fence? Is what we're going with this?
Exactly.
Okay.
Unless it absolutely has to be removed or something.
Unless it, yeah, unless we have something.
Any more discussion? Any more discussion? We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number six is we have a citizen complaint regarding some debris on the Buffalo Hills Trail cleanup. Uh, amazingly, this happens to be a perfect year to have a little extra time to do some cleanup, and our engineer, um, uh, agrees that it should be taken care of. How long, Mr. Halsetter?
If we don't get snow, I think it's something that we can, um, I'm, I'm not sure exactly where we're at with our other brushing activities around the city, but as soon as we complete those, then we would move on to the trail.
Upday within thirty days?
Sure.
Okay, that's just an FYI. Item number seven, y'all received a picture of a tree and a fence, and, uh, there's no anything here at all. Uh, we received a complaint that, um, are in our, in our efforts to trim trees, and by the way, both this fence and the tree are in the.
I, I think our property owner may be in the audience, so.
Mr. Wheeler's here? Is Mr. Wheeler here?
I, I didn't see him. No?
Is there, do you see him, Jeff?
No, apparently not.
Okay, thank you.
That fruit by the foot might be considered blight, too.
The what?
The garbage.
Oh, it's not buckthorn, is it?
Okay, I'll let you continue, Mr. Beavons.
Thank you. Anyway, the, the property owner complained that the city crews went and trimmed in the, if you turn the second page, you can see the before picture as the, um, as the, uh, what, what prompted this is the, uh, the sprouts around the base of the tree were growing over the fence and then over the curb. So you can see that, that triggers, that triggers a crew to come out there and take care of it. They could trim it back to the, um, to the right-of-way, but of course, everything's on the right-of-way, so they trimmed it back to the tree. Um, we had a complaint from the property owner, but with no, I mean, just, they just complained. They didn't, and so it's on here duly noted that we got the complaint, there was no request for anything, and this is, in our policy, this is how we do things. And so now you know, this happened, and so if somebody mentions it, you've heard about it, and that is the end of report.
Can I ask one question on that? Are we going to continue to, you know, so staff has got a direction that we can?
I certainly hope so, personally.
Okay, so you're getting the direction, you continue, even though, you know.
I can make that as a motion.
Yeah, we, we make every attempt to, to try to trim things, you know, nicely.
Okay.
Could I ask, uh, don't we notify the property owner if we're going to come out and try to do some of that?
Generally not, we, we just, we just don't have time to go and try to review all the properties first.
It's in the right-of-way, and it becomes.
So a lot, a lot of our crews will just go up and down the streets and through the alleys, and when they see something, they, they take care of it versus, you know, trying to go out in advance and, and identify properties and photograph them and note, you know, write letters, and that's just very, very time-consuming.
Jeff, you describe real quick why you did this, because of your traffic with your vehicles, so people understand right now why, why you're trimming.
The, the ordinance requires that any sort of trees or brush adjacent to the, uh, street, well, we require a clear zone of fourteen feet above the curb. So anything overhanging a street cannot be less than fourteen feet above the curb. And the reason for that is because of some of the height of our equipment, our street sweepers, our plow trucks. Um, if we're trying to get equipment up to the curb to either sweep or clean, um, you know, those low-hanging branches can potentially, you know, knock our lights off the top of the vehicles, cause damage to them, uh, knock, knock windshield wipers off, so, um, so we, we trim them up to that clearance.
There you go. We're done. Okay. End of report. Item number nine, we're going to go into.
Sorry. Excuse me.
Thank you. Item number nine, unfinished business. A HRA board membership request withdrawal, is somebody here for that?
Rick was elected board president, you could talk about it, board chair.
What just happened is that the HRA, if you recall, they had a request to possibly go to seven members. Uh, because it's in your minutes that this was going to be carried forward, I want to let you know that the HRA officially decided not to go forward with seven members. And so that request has been withdrawn officially, and that's why it's worded that way.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Will they just, will they stay with five then?
They have a total authorized of six.
Right. But will they, I notice there's no call for applicants to fill the one spot that stepped down, so that means my question stands, are they going to stay with five?
My understanding is they're going to go for six.
Oh, so someday we'll get that. Okay, that's a.
The agenda, yeah, fifteen B has Dale Parks being pointed to HRA, so we will be back at six.
Okay, thank you. We move on to nine B, call for applicants. Um, Cable TV Advisory Committee, two terms to expire on twelve thirty-one, two thousand sixteen, and twelve thirty-one, two thousand seventeen. The Charter Commission, we have two terms to expire on twelve thirty-one, two thousand eighteen. EDA, we need one for the term to expire on nine-seven, twenty-twenty. Rental Dwelling Boards of Appeal, one tenant and one general public representative, terms to expire twelve thirty-one, twenty sixteen. Um, and then I guess we'll move on to ten, Planning Commission. A variance, and this would be a variance auto zones, and I'll let you go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, AutoZone, as you know, is interested in the Old Freedom Gas Station site on Highway two-ten. Um, they have been interested in quite some time, we've had quite a few conversations with them about design on the site, et cetera. Um, they have, uh, they approached the Planning Commission for a signed variance, actually, there are two variances. Uh, one is they want to continue using the fifty-six-foot-tall sign that is currently on the property. Uh, and they also want to have the separation distance, uh, the, the property is three hundred feet long, and a three-hundred-foot-long piece of property gets two signs, one at each end. The current sign is less than three hundred feet apart from where the one on the east end would go, so they're asking for a variance from the, the distance requirement for the two signs. Um, the, uh, AutoZone had a representative attend the Planning Commission meeting, and, um, basically, what he said was kind of somewhat disturbing. Uh, he said something to the effect of, um, either we get the variance or we're not going to build. Um, apparently, and I have no verification of this, but it's per, something in the purchase agreement or something like that. Um, I told the Planning Commission to disregard that information, um, that has nothing to do with how you make your recommendation, um, based on what the criteria requires. Um, so the Planning Commission went through its review process, and after that, did identify that they could recommend approval uh, for the two variances, uh, one to permit the reuse of this fifty-six-foot-tall sign, and of course, if it's going to be reused, the, the separation variance would go along with that. Um, two things that they did recommend was, um, in the packet that they received, and you got a copy of, they showed the sign that would go on that tall sign, and that was the square, that's the square footage that the, um, Planning Commission said they have to use, as depicted on the illustration on dated January twenty-first, uh, twenty-four, uh, fourteen, on the commission packet, and two, that, uh, any future sign cannot be animated. Um, that's a condition also from the Planning Commission. So, um, their recommendation is to approve this variance.
Thank you, Mark. And what I'm going to do when it comes to the Planning Commission, because Dave is the council liaison, and I, and I'm going to actually let him just take over on the next four items, and he can work with the motions and everything else, you know, because basically, you know, that, you were there, you know, you're the eyes for the council, and, um, so I'm going to just let you go ahead and make the motions, or, you know, A through D, and just continue with it, because I, I appreciate you being there, and second of all, you know what's going on, so thank you.
And I have no, no problem either way, I mean, you know, Mr. Halsard does a wonderful deal. Um, but I make a, make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, oppose. So, motion passes, then you go ahead with B, Dave.
Okay, so the next one is the conditional use permit for Minnesota Adult Teen Challenge for the property at twenty-four twenty-four Business Three Seventy-One, uh, to construct in addition. Uh, I think we've all kind of looked at this before, uh, they're adding, you know, if you look at the, the adjacent uses, you have multifamily residential, you have commercial, and you have vacant. Um, adjacent zoning is R-three. Adjacent zoning is R-three, I-two, B-four, A-one, and R-three. So, the Planning Commission kind of looked at what they were doing, looked at the need of the community, looked at the guidelines set out, and voted to approve this.
Second.
Motion, you have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, oppose. Motion carries. Ten C, zoning text amendment.
Okay, ten C is amending the Brainerd zoning ordinance sections five-one-five, six-three-two regarding testing labs. What it was is we already had a lot of different things, if you look at the other one, and the texting amendment, things that were permitted, but we did not have specific language that would permit testing labs for water and soil, rocks, minerals, and air quality. So, we voted to approve this, there's some interest to have some sort of testing in that area, and we can't see any, any conflict with the proposal and the guidelines set by the city. And so I move to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, a motion?
Aye.
Same sign, oppose. Motion carries.
All right, the last one, which I did not tab, okay.
And you can refer to Mark if you need to.
Mark, you wanna grab, take this one?
Hydro dam.
The hydro dam?
Yeah, it's the one on the rezoning, the land.
Right.
What I'd like to first of all is mention that there is an error in the staff report, I gave you a copy of a set of conditions that are in front of you, I sent an email out late today, you probably all didn't yet. This has to do with the rezoning on the west side of the Mississippi River, the property that was annexed into the city in two thousand and fourteen. The Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider an RA rural agriculture zone to the property. They held the hearing, and their findings of fact, and you should have a copy in front of you there, and I'll get a copy here, I wanna make sure that we're all on the same Findings of fact have to do with the property is thirty-seven acres in size, is vacant and annexed to the city in two thousand and fourteen. It's adjacent to the utility dam, is owned by the city. The RA zoning permits limits, has limitations on lot size of twenty acres. You know, this is number four is a significant one, the topography of that site is such that development is really limited, there's a little bit of area on the north end for development purposes. Mississippi Headwaters Board went up to Walker and talked to the Mississippi Headwaters Board, they support the RA zoning. The Future Land Use Plan, Low and Medium Density complies with that, and then there's some findings in the, from the Comprehensive Plan that support it. And finally, number eight, two people did get up and, and express some concerns, not opposition, but some concerns, feeling that the property wasn't well suitable for development, and I think they may be a little unclear about why we're using RA zone, but they had concerns about why the, about the property being suited for agriculture. The reason why the RA zone is being used is the minimum lot size of twenty acres.
Thank you, Mark. Go ahead, Dave.
And move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second, if we have any discussion?
Any more questions?
Go ahead.
Mark, could you, I'm reading the Headwaters Board letter, I thought once it was annexed into the city, they didn't have say, or is that not, did I misunderstand that?
Apparently, no.
Because I'm reading this, and it says-
Yeah, that's the way I understood it, too, but no, there's some land that's along the Mississippi River that they apparently think they have some jurisdictions to recommend what zoning should be on it. The best I can say, I don't agree with it, but I went along with it.
Because when they're dealing with cities, the Mississippi Headwaters Board, they, there's, they say that's where the boundaries stop for them, and so I guess I'm trying to make sure we don't crack an egg that we don't need to here.
Well, I went to Walker, I went to Walker and sat down at the hearing, or the meeting with the, with the board, and I'm kind of confused myself.
Jeff, go ahead.
I might be able to shed a little light on that, my understanding of that situation is that, that Mississippi Headwaters Board does not have jurisdiction over river frontage that was included in our original corporate limits of the city of Brainerd. For instance, we've got the Mills property that annexed south of town, and it's my understanding that the Mississippi Headwaters Board does claim jurisdiction over the frontage on that property, and I think other properties that are, are more currently annexed to the city.
Just again, trying to reduce the duplication that Mr. Sheeler talked about earlier in Noah's Ark theory, so.
Thank you, I like your egg-cracking one better. We have a motion on the floor, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. We go to eleven, which is public forum, time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council, time limits may be imposed. We put Howard Brewer up on this, he's listed, and he said no more than six minutes, so, well, that's what you told me.
Sixty, wasn't it, Howard?
No.
Probably not that long.
So, it'll start at nine fifty-one.
My name's Howard Brewer, I live at one-two-one thirty, I live in northeastern Brainerd. And I've got some concerns as far as the fire department issue is concerned, and I think if the proper protocol is I ask the council, the president a question, he asks the rest of the council, is that right?
First, if you wanna just go into what you wanna ask, or what you're kinda going over, you know, so that we're just-
Well, I guess my question to the council would be, is that how many of you had firefighter training?
Firefighter training?
Firefighter training.
I don't, no.
Well, let me begin with, I met with Chip last month for lunch, and he knows that I don't drive, so he offered me a ride home, I didn't get my duty driver. So, in the course of the conversation, in front of where I live, we're talking about, I live in what's known as a tinderbox. It's an older home, probably a hundred years old, and when that thing goes on fire, it just, pretty much time, let's put it that way. The insulation back in those days were probably newspapers, whatever, to do that. But I guess my concern is, when I'm reading in the Brainerd Dispatch, is that, I was before, it's, not just all you council members, but the last council, a little over two years ago, voicing concern, and a lot of this first started taking fruit. I remember at that time that I, I quoted like, mission township, mission township has two firebombs, ten pieces of equipment, ideal township has two fire stations, ten pieces of equipment. And evidently, they really believe in fire protection. Okay, that's one thing. And then, on August twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, they had a meeting up at the fire station, and they had a fire chief from Cloquet, Minnesota, and he was there advocating, I forget what they call it, a-
Fire district?
Fire, no, not a fire district, he was advocating, well, maybe that's what it was.
That's what they have up in Cloquet, yes, sir.
Pardon me?
That's what they have up in Cloquet, is my understanding? Is it a fire district?
No, fire reasons.
It's fire service district.
Fire reasons, what they're discussing. So what that would entail, is if you go that route, and I'm surprised, by reading the paper, that the county commissioners would make statements like that, if you go to that regional fire department concept, you lose all control over your fire department. And it's that simple. You got no say, they create another government entity like we need like a hole in the head, and then they go on from there, and that was over two years ago. And like I said, the last time I was in part of the council here, I like my fire department. I think I'll match that, our fire department, to anybody in this country, not this controlling colony, or whatever. We cover three hundred square miles, and to put that in perspective, that's roughly the equivalent of the size of Minneapolis and St. Paul put together, for, for the coverage they produce, and the, what they accomplish, what they-
Yeah, and I just wanna jump in, I know you're, you're already past it, I'm gonna be as flexible as I can, so we can get to the point, but I also want you to know, we have a county advisory, or I meant, a fire advisory board.
Yeah, I know.
And they have open forum there, and there's a great place for a lot of your discussion, because most of what we take is from that board.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not faulting anybody here.
Yeah, and I just, I'm gonna watch the clock here, but you're way past, and I don't know how much more you got.
But I, but I, what I think I found interesting, is that the Brainerd Dispatch did a survey, it's closed now, but, out of that survey, twenty-four percent said they wanted a full-time, full-time fire department. Sixty percent said keep it as is. I think that should tell everybody something right there. I'm trying to watch the point. And go to page two there, that's a five-year, the way they set that budget up is a five years.
Yep.
The act's has grown tremendously in five years, not only population, but businesses, they're, they're gonna continue to grow, okay? As much as I can, as quick as I can. Okay, but they want cost analysis, that's busy, that's pretty easy, is, on the one page here, you'll get you a rough idea, just, just a Humper truck costs two hundred and fifty to two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, depending on bells, bells and whistles. And I think the last page, oh no, it's not the last page, I'll tell you what they did in the-
I'm gonna have to start, I don't know how much more time you need, Howard, you're pushing ten minutes now.
Okay. Go to the Moatana Fire Department, here's some, here's something you might look at, they got full-time, and they got what they call, well, for young bachelors, I suppose, they're, they're part-time, but they live at the fire station, at least twenty days a month. They're right there, okay. We get to, last point I wanna bring up, is that, depending on what survey you read, I think the consensus is that a fire doubles in size every minute, that's a long one. My firefighter training, we're trained, it doubles in thirty seconds, but we were dealing with a whole different ball of wax, so if we, if we lose our full-timers, and I talked to the fire chief in Corey, I forget his last name, and he's one of the full-timers, it takes a good minute, even with him right at the station, for them to get out the door.
Yep.
So, if it's a fire at my house, that doubles in that minute, and depending on traffic, weather, time of day, et cetera, it could be another two or three minutes. By that time, I'm a crispy critter, if they're not right out of the door right away. I don't look forward to that at all, but-
Thank you for your time, Howard.
Yeah, anybody got any questions?
Yeah, we're pushing the limits here on the questions, but I appreciate your time, and keep sending the information to the council, okay?
That's why I want our next meeting, is here.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to, any more, anybody else for open forum, public forum, anybody else? Thank Howard. And I, basically, Howard called there in a week, I'll put your name right on it if you want. Item number twelve, we'll close the public forum, staff reports, the written ones, verbal, any updates since the packet? We have no, okay, yes, jumping there.
I'd like to add to my report, because I think not everybody realizes or knows about it, but I, on January twenty-third, I attended out at the Forest Field, they had a presentation of the ribbon schools for the Brainerd District, and out of the state of Minnesota, there were eight total schools that received this really very prestigious award. Brainerd School District had six of them, which includes Neswau, Baxter, and the Brainerd. And to me, we had, we had a congressman, Nolan was there, Senator Root was there, Representative Heitzen, and the Baxter Mayor, Todd Holman, was there. I love that. Anyway, but to me, it was really, all of the staff was there, I mean, there was nothing but blue shirts throughout that, they call it a cafeteria, so it's, but they had a really absolutely fantastic presentation, and I think as a, as a member of this community, and having kids go through the schools and that, I'm really proud of what our, our school district has accomplished with the receiving those blue ribbon schools, and I, I think I can infer with a gentleman over there that is a teacher, so. And then the other thing is, it's interesting that, and probably a lot of people don't realize, but I started here in nineteen seventy-eight on the council, and one of the first reporters that was sitting and reporting in the room was a little different than this, was Mr. Mike Arorg from the Brainerd Dispatch. And so Mike, Mr. Arorg and I go back, and he retired on the twenty, well, he actually retired on the twenty-eighth, his last day, I think was Friday, but they had a nice, and I did have a plaque made up for him for, because he did cover quite a variety of issues, and he did it very well, he, he had a quiet demeanor, but he was very amenable to talk to, and to me, he did an excellent job, and I think the Dispatch is gonna have a hard time replacing him. So, with that, just to let you know that we will have the National American Legion Commander in Brainerd tomorrow at noon at the Legion, which is one of the few communities, but to have the National Commander here is, and so I will be there to welcome him, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. We moved from twelve to thirteen, and we got the mayor's report done in number thirteen, and we have council other committee reports. I'm not gonna have a council president report, so we're not gonna bore anybody here. Item number fourteen, committee resignations, accept with regret. We'll start out each one individual, Brainerd HRA, Miss Lucy Nesham, and that's to continue on this service on the BPU.
Move to accept with regret.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Same sign, oppose, motion carries, then we'll go to B, Charter Commission, Mr. Don Samuelson.
Move to accept with regret.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fifteen, committee recommendations, recommended by council president. Fifteen A, Dale Parks for the Planning Commission, and that term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand sixteen, and he's appointed to replace Dolly Manton. And then we also have Dale Parks on HRA, term to expire six-six, two thousand seventeen, and he's appointed to replace Lucy Nesham, he's gonna be one busy-
Busy person.
And basically, we need a motion for that.
I move to approve both appointments.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we're looking for item number sixteen, a motion to approve.
Second.